YouTube.
You are now live on channel eight in YouTube.
All right. Just pulling up the YouTube. Right, got the YouTube. All right, good evening, the time is now six thirty PM, I'm Chairman Mike Curry and I like to call this select board business meeting to order on this twenty sixth day of January twenty twenty two. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance, Terry's got the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, good to see everyone. Before we begin, I'd like to state for the record that not only are we being streamed live on TCTV cable station eight in our YouTube web platform, but this evening's recording will be available for later viewing on our YouTube channel. Don't forget to subscribe and hit the bell, that way you know anytime a meeting starts. Just doing a quick roll call, we've got Terry, Tim, Julie, and a bunch of department heads, emergency management. We've got town council, we've got our quorum, so let's get going. As always, our agenda for this evening has been set no later than forty eight hours out by law. It is publicly available at the official source for town information, that is www dot Templeton MA dot gov. Although I have the discretion as chairperson to add and remove from the agenda, it has been set to allow for time, personnel, resources, and public awareness. I've reserved the right to move agenda items around to best fit our business and guests, thanks. Public participation in comment is still possible via the chat section of the live stream on YouTube. INTCTV are monitoring the chat section, will address comments and questions as they appear or when appropriate. Remember, this is a chat, this chat area is part of the permanent record, so if it's not already apparent, please state your name as you would during town meeting, as most YouTube names can be informal. And don't forget that the live chat is about twenty to about ten to twenty seconds behind the live meeting. Here we are back in Zoom, at least for until April first. Just want to go over a couple Zoom rules of the road, please use video when possible. If you are waiting for your agenda item up, you can turn off your video, but it is it is best for the public to see everybody as we conduct the town's business. Please use the mute feature when you're not speaking, although TCTV can place any and all on mute, it is easier for you to control your own button. If you wish to speak, you may raise your hand, use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or politely break in if you're only on the telephone, or you can't find the button. If you wish to see material shared in the screen, please request that of me. It could be an email, a document, a map, or otherwise, just to help clarify the content. This will help everyone stay synchronized and be helpful to the viewing public. As of right now, I think only the chair, which is a co-host, and TCTV are able to share contents or screens. All right, thank you, everybody. All right, we've got some minutes to approve before some citizen input and business tonight, it looks like we've got one, two. Just over a half dozen agenda items tonight, a bunch of reports, we've got a public hearing. We'll talk about some COVID test kits and possibly a couple other updates from other members of the board. But first, let's take care of those minutes, we've got meeting minutes from our January twelfth meeting. You have them in your packet and had time to review them, so at this time, are there any questions, clarifications, or amendments to those meeting minutes? If not, I'll entertain a a motion to accept the meeting minutes of January twelfth twenty twenty two.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of January twelve twenty twenty two as presented.
Okay, I had a motion, I think, Tim, did I hear you second?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, anything, anything further on those meeting minutes? I'm just checking to see if we had Jeff come in, nope, all right, hearing nothing further on the motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented for January twelfth twenty twenty two. How do you vote, Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
I'm staying.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, meeting minutes are entered into the record and will be available for the clerk to sign. Okay, at this time, I will entertain any citizen input. I'll just pause for a moment, I wanted to give a quick update in the community on our COVID response. Sadly, our numbers, if you check the state website, we have currently or last reported two hundred and eighty four cases of COVID in the community. Select Board member Toth and I had been talking. Laurie, I don't know if what your thoughts on it, but those numbers could be artificially low based on the fact that we've got home test kits out there. So still a high number like that, we would just ask people to observe all of those preventative measures that have that we've been living on for over two years. Wash your hands, use a mask, pay attention to the businesses that you walk into. That people are trying to do all that they can during the pandemic. If they have a sign asking for people to wear masks, please abide by that, we don't need anyone. We don't need any TikTok viral videos of people screaming at each other. I think we've been doing very well as a community and respecting everyone's differing wishes or differing opinions during this pandemic, but let's let's try and get this through this together. I will mention that there is another vaccine clinic coming up on Monday, February seventh, from two thirty in the afternoon to six thirty in the evening, and that is at the Narragansett Middle School Cafeteria or Auditorium Cafeteria, got it? Okay, so again, Monday, May, Monday, February seventh, two thirty to six thirty. If you have not ordered your free federal COVID tests, please point your browser or your smartphone to covidtest.gov, it took me less than thirty seconds to order, I don't have them yet, but I did get the USPS notification that that they're on their way. I think that they'll arrive within the next couple of days. It's another tool in your quiver of tools that you can use to, if you start to feel symptoms, the antigen tests are perfect for that, if you actually have, if you have some symptoms and you want to confirm whether you think it's COVID or not, use these rapid at-home kits, also known as antigen. You get the PCR when you go into a hospital or, you know, following the advice of your doctor. But again, if you haven't ordered your free tests, please, please do so, it there's a lot of tests out there, we're gonna talk a little bit more about some additional testing capabilities that we're working on here in town. And that's all I had for a COVID update unless anyone else had anything COVID related. We are still in citizen input, so if anyone wanted to jump in with anything else, they're they're more than
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Sure, absolutely, Tim.
The presidential decree, all the insurances are now to reimburse any expenses out of your pocket, buying the kits, save your receipts. Most of the insurance companies have a process to do that. A lot of the local pharmacies are trying to figure out a way to bill it, just like when you go in for a prescription or anything else. There'll be a little more news to come on that. That allows up to eight tests per person per household to a maximum of four people in the household. Theoretically, thirty-two tests per home every month.
Thank you, Tim. I've got nothing on the live chat, by the way, of comments, any, I'll go one around one last time.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Bob.
I guess it's known Mr. Tim Toth has retired from the fire department. I just wanted to thank him for his years of service and dedication to the town of Templeton.
Absolutely, Bob, before we started the meeting, there was a couple of congratulations, I kind of, I didn't, I didn't aware, I wasn't aware that this, today is the day, Tim. This is your official first day of retirement from the
Day of Retirement, it was actually yesterday afternoon, yep.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you for the kind words, Bob.
Thank you, Tim, thanks, Bob, I was sitting here biting my tongue, I am so glad you did that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I also will add, you know, Tim, Tim is a veteran, he spent many, many, many years in uniform, so I like to even characterize Tim has had a lifetime of service, both in his his own local community and internationally, serving and protecting as those in uniform do, so again, Tim, we recognize you've devoted a lot, a large part of your life to helping those around you, so thank you again.
Thank you for that, it's my pleasure.
All right, I think that wraps it up for citizen input. Yep, no one else throwing anything at me. Okay, we're gonna jump into new business, it looks on, it looks like my agenda says that we have no introductions of new employees and no further appointments this evening, so we're gonna we're gonna go ahead, I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing on the Deppel Pond Dam.
So moved.
Okay, okay, I have a motion in a second to open a public hearing on the Deppel Pond Dam. Anything else? Right, on that motion that has been seconded, how do you vote, Julie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Let's open this meeting at six forty-two PM. Okay, I talked with the the town administrator a little bit earlier, along with Rich Curtis. Tom, I think that you've got the the, as hearings go, we've got the the issue or the the issue at hand. If we have any other guests or anyone that has an opposing view or something, someone has other other pieces of evidence or opinions on it, we'll allow that after the the opening introduction. At which point then the board members can ask any clarifying questions. We'll answer those as much as we can. Once that's been exhausted, I'd ask for a recommendation of the petitioner or the presenter. We'll then close the public hearing, then the board will, any deliberation or motions or decisions will be made outside of the hearing, sound fair? All right, Tom, I think you're doing the presentation to open.
So I wasn't, I guess what I was planning on doing was talking to you just about the statute you're operating under here. And then I'm hoping Rich Curtis can kind of update you on kind of what's happening in the field.
Perfect, I was ready either way, so what I'll do is I'll do the opening presentation and then kind of as witnesses, Tom and and Curtis, I'm sorry, Rich can can offer any updates, statutes, and otherwise, sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, so in the the public hearing for Deppel Pond Dam, the background is the Deppel Pond Dam is a privately owned or it is on private property. The Mr. Gabazade, Gabazade, sorry, I rehearsed it ahead of time and I can't read my own writing, Mr. Mady Gabazade. The the state dam safety office came out and did an assessment, found that it was in pretty serious shape and had made recommendations that the town do something about it, or at least communicate with the landowner to make sure that that we had proper safety measures in place. Emergency management drafted a memorandum, basically citing the conditions and and gave it to all the abutting and downstream residents. We have had at least two meetings. One public, one department head meeting that Select Board member Bennett and I attended. The other was public, basically a strategy meeting, and we'd asked town council for a host of COAs or options to be able to admin. Could admin, we just had someone join the meeting called admin, could you identify yourself?
Hi, Mike, it's Jackie, I don't, I'm at Phillipston, so I don't know if
Okay, no, TCTV can rename you, thank you for that.
To do that, thank you.
Yep, no problem, back to the hearing. So courses of action, we had a couple of different, three major courses of action were identified. Basically, do nothing, allow the 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 landowner to take ownership and action for it, we had a select board option and then a the construction building permit, building inspector, which was probably the the quicker action of all of them. At this point, when we came out of that meeting, we were deciding to proceed with a select board option to hold a public hearing, which we're doing right now. We were successful in in serving a notice of the public hearing to Mr. Gabazade, who may join us at any moment, which would offer at least some two-way communication with the current landowner. Okay, current conditions. We are not using the word imminent, but we understand that there are a host of problems, there is vegetation, there is vectors, namely beavers that are causing additional harm, there is degrade, concrete degradation, there are a host of different conditions that are basically giving us or giving emergency management the understanding that there could be a catastrophic event if we were not to not act. And I've already talked through the options, so as an opening presentation, that at least gives us what we're facing. Tom, if I could ask for your presentation at this point?
Sure, so, Mr. Chair and members of the board, you're holding this hearing under chapter one thirty-nine, sections one through three A, and so to start with, you have broad authority in this instance to determine what you want to do, so under under chapter one thirty-nine, you can address unsafe structures, really in any way you see fit, you can require their removal, you can require their repair, or you can do anything in between. So as you're going for, you also, by the way, have the authority to fine the property owner up to a thousand dollars a day during such time as he's in violation of whatever order you issue. I'd point out that the state has given him till April twenty twenty-three to do the repairs. You do not have to live with their timeframe, but I just wanted to make you aware of, you know, kind of of what their damn safety order says. So as you're, you know, as you hear the report from Rich about the conditions and potential solutions, my advice would be to, you know, we seem to have kind of a reluctant to absentee landowner here. So think about how we might want to best approach that, and you can, your authority extends to going in and fixing it in whatever way you think it should be fixed yourself, and then seeking reimbursement from the landowner. Now, as I think we may have indicated at the last hearing, there's no guarantees on on reimbursement, right, we, you know, we can go after them, but but we can't guarantee success on that, so that's another thing to kind of keep in your in your in your decision bucket, the likelihood of success if you take it upon yourself to do. So I guess I just, I think you are, I think you have really, really broad authority, and so I I'm encouraging you to kind of figure out how you best want to do this, and then I think we can maybe help you get there with a properly drafted order.
Tom, is the is the issue that it continued, that the land continues to be in in the landowner's possession, I mean, we obviously don't want to become stewards of someone else, you know, spending taxpayer dollars or any, any, any public funds to continually fix this, what is the, I mean, I take a near-term approach because we have, you know, it's the severity of it has, you know, is really captured everyone's attention, and we want to be able to provide an initial, and I've got, we've got ideas for an initial reaction, but in terms of end game, whether we're charging or not, what, you know, does the landowner still, under whatever conditions, still retain ownership of the land?
Yes. I mean, so we won't acquire the land under this process. My understanding is that he's not up to date on his taxes, so we may have the opportunity to to acquire the land in a tax-taking, but we wouldn't be able to acquire it under this process, the process you're using here is is the same process that you use if there's a dilapidated building in town, right, so you know, it's unsafe. And so what you can do is you can tear it down, you can board it up, you can put a fence around it, you can make it safe. And so the authority goes to to addressing its, it's nuisance or unsafe structures, and so what we're actually addressing here, the structure is the dam, and it's been identified as an unsafe dam, unsafe structure, so now our authority kicks in to remove it, fix it, or do anything in between.
And any fines, you know, if we, whether it's April, or, you know, we put a different, different timeframe to it, once you know, the failure to remedy that situation and we start accruing fines, I mean, what's the end game for that, if if there's truly no if there's no desire from the landowner, I mean, the landowner winds up saying, all right, great, you're you're finding me five hundred dollars a day.
Yeah.
Go on to perpetuity.
Right. Yeah, so no, it's it's a it's a fair point, Mike, that you know, finding someone who has a valuable piece of property is a lot more effective than finding someone who has a property that is not very valuable.
Right. Okay. Terry, go ahead.
Two things, if he's, if he doesn't have the money, it's not gonna do any good to find him. And I was just wondering if we did go the taking through tax title route. Oh, God, no, it's I forgot the question, dang it, oh, if he didn't respond, so say we did decide to go through the taking through tax title route. He's not responding as of today to anything. What happens if he doesn't respond to that?
So under the, so under the tax-taking statute, there's a, there's a process that the town would go through. It use, I believe it uses a firm called Coppola and Coppola, they do practically all the tax takings across the state, so what they do is they they record the town's desire to take the property. It's a court process, and then it's recorded and it's served on the landowner, and the landowner has I'm not sure the exact timeframe, it might be a year to redeem the property, pay all the back taxes and whatever other charges are levied against it. And then it's, he gets the property back, and if he doesn't do it, then it it is now the town's property.
All right, like Pleasant Street.
Is there an estimate of legal fees that in conjunction with that?
It's, I couldn't tell you how much you pay for that service, it's not a lot, I would guess it's on the order of two thousand or less.
Do you know the way?
Terry, we budget for that, I mean, that's 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 normal business for the town. This isn't, that that tax-taking is something we're good at.
It's not a necessary, well, huh?
It is, unfortunately. Okay, did you have another question, Terry?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can, can we get also get some input from Mr. Sozik and Mr. Curtis as well, I know I talked with both of them today, so.
Okay. Barbara, Rich, Rich, can you go first?
Yeah, I do have one concern, and that is that the paperwork that the DCR Office of Damn Safety put out, their notice of the damn safety order there never got given to this guy, never got served to him by them, does that make a difference?
So we did serve him with it, and so it's a, it's an interesting question, Rich, but if I'm in his camp, I don't think he can now argue that he didn't receive a copy, he might be able to say that he didn't receive a copy from the state, but he can't say that he that he never received a copy, and I'm not sure the state the state issues it, but I don't know that they require receipt, I think their job is done once it's issued, they they have kind of lighter rules for services.
In my discussions, in fact, I was talking with him today too, but in a previous discussion with Ed Connor, Office of Damn Safety out of Worcester, he told me that all the time limits and time constraints and whatnot in their damn safety order don't even start until he becomes served with that notice. So I did neglect to ask if our serving him with our paperwork and theirs, if that took care of their issue, I didn't find that out, but I can find that out tomorrow.
Right, so what they, yeah, what they did, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but so they served him at three addresses by certified mail.
Yep.
And so when you, you know, that that's the green card on the back, and then the post office either gets him to sign it and you get the green card back, or they return it saying that we attempted, and he didn't, he didn't retrieve it, so I suspect that they can argue, you know, we tried three of his last best addresses and either, you know, got a green card back or didn't, but I don't I don't think they need to do actual in-hand service, I think they need to make the attempt at it, and if the attempt is made, I think a court would uphold their actions and their and the operation of their order.
Okay. Yeah, and Rich, I'll clarify, you know, we're not not deliberating, but I'll clarify what Tom was saying earlier. It's, if we're choosing to, it's our chapter one thirty-nine, it's where we're getting in the driver's seat at that point.
Right. But just keep in mind that, and you know, I've mentioned this in our previous meetings too, that if we go in there and take out the dam, that may not solve our problems because the beavers could rebuild their own. You know, it's gonna be a constant battle, whether we own it or not. So I think this is gonna be an ongoing issue for years.
Yeah. Terry, did you have a question?
Yeah, that was kind of my question is what's our, what's our bottom line timeline? I mean, we monitor it closely, and then if it gets, I mean, before disaster, how do we tell, maybe Mr. Sozik or Mr. Curtis can, how do we tell when it's time to act in a timely manner rather than just, you know what I mean?
Well, when the beavers were active, and and right now, those are our biggest enemies right now, because when they block up the spillway, it raises the water level by one or two feet, and that's putting undue stress on that ancient dilapidated dam. And if it goes over the berm, that's where we could have our problem because it's the, the erosion will start and it'll just eat right through it. So that's our biggest concern. They did put a beaver deterrent pipe in. It's a 10 or 12 inch pipe. But it doesn't meet the needs because there's more water coming into that pond than what that 12 inch or 10 inch pipe will allow to go out. So even though the beavers could pack it solid, except for that pipe, and the pipe is running full, it's still going to keep rising and rising until it goes over the top of that, if nobody's watching it and pulling it out. And when, when the beavers were busy, we were literally up there every day, pulling the same amount out every day.
So there's no, there's no guarantee we can come up with a solid plan that's going to work. But I'm wondering what the cost is, you know, in the long run, as opposed to really trying to just take care of it right away. You know, if we keep, continue to monitor it, that adds up. If it goes, then that's the worst case scenario. So how do you, how do we balance out the cost factor of letting it, how long do we let it go before we actually determine the cost factors tipping in the wrong direction?
Well, when I was talking with Ed Connor, probably a month and a half or two months ago, he was, you know, he couldn't give us exact prices by any means. But he feels that a safe price to consider for that size of a dam would be anywhere between $676,000 up to 1.1 million to replace it. Obviously you do anything less than that, it's going to cost you less. But you know, even if we take it out completely, which might be our better option, it's the cheapest option, I believe. We still might have to contend with beaver issues, which wouldn't be as bad because you wouldn't have a dam to worry about.
Unless we dry it up?
Well, that would dry up a lot of it until the beavers decided to start raising the water level again.
So is there a tipping point for cost? I mean, obviously we don't have the bigger bucks, but.
Not really. I mean, it's, we gotta wait for an engineering study to find out where we stand.
Adam, you have your hand up.
Just like what Rich said, it would require an engineer to come in and to do an estimate on alternative analysis on what can be done and what those costs are, quite frankly. So that would bring in a whole nother component to this, as Rich suggested and quite frankly, I, I look at it, the town has done a tremendous amount. Making sure the notice was served and everything up to this point. Ultimately, that the, the board would have to decide whether they wanted to use ARPA funds as such to cover a request from Mr. Curtis to, to go for an engineered study. And Rich could certainly get that information and cost associated with that. That's all I got. And Bob, I think that's something further.
I do, I do have a question for Tom. As if the ownership of the property stays with Mr. Gabazati and we are, we are, we are decide to act and we're expending funds. Those funds are still attributed to that, the property owner.
You know, that's right. Yes, we can seek reimbursement.
Okay. Do we, if we go through tax taking, are we basically forfeiting the money that we've spent, basically saying, we're going to take on the property at that point, and then all the liabilities that would, you know, I understand how liens work. So if, if there's tax that is owed, let's say he winds up selling the property. And then the town, you know, gets their cut of whatever is owed. In this situation, if, if we're, if the town is expending dollars to to keep this property in a safe condition, does that go to the new owner, whether it's the town or a, a new, someone that's going to buy it?
Is it recovered? Yeah. So I think the question is, can we, well, well, tell me if this is the question. Can we include whatever we spend out there as a lien on the taxes? So can we collect it as further taxes? So the answer to that is, I think so. But I'm not sure it's helpful because I don't know the delta, right? But so, and like the first question is, would we, if we acquire the property, would we sell it? And if we did, you know, then that's an opportunity to, to recoup some funds. If, you know, if we acquire and hold, there's not really that opportunity. And we could go after him in contract, but remember he doesn't live in the state and that gets awkward and expensive.
Yep. All right. You, yeah, you answered both questions. So thank you.
I, I also think that would be a very, very hard sale. It's a landlocked piece of property. And you know, whether they'd get it right away, there's no real land per se, other than the edge of the pond. So that would be a hard sell.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Sozik.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Board, you touched on a few things. Um, my, I, my strong opinion about this whole thing is I really hate to see the tax dollars spent on this dam. The dam has been downgrading itself well before I started. Thing to do is do like a weekly inspection. Excuse me. And, and if we notice any more seeping through the bankens or the dam failing in the worst condition, act upon it with like the water break I suggested. Or if we decide we want to lower the water table, we will end up cutting the concrete in the dam. So when the water starts falling, that's going to erode the, the banks. And it'll go free flow at its own. We can control it if we cut the concrete and lower the water that way. And then you can make a further decision down the road. If you want to totally empty it, then we can start digging it out at a much controllable flow. And the beavers will, if we cut that concrete, we can, we'll still have to maintain the beavers, or at least hire a trapper. A stone break, as I explained before, you're, you're talking between 55 and 6,500 bucks. And a beaver trapper. If there's several beavers, you could spend four or five grand just on trapping beavers. Because we pretty much blew through that budget last, while this passed summer and spring. But I would do it as little cost to the town as possible. Yeah. I mean, if it, it's been like this for several years. It could be several more years before finally let's go. And I say we deal with it at that time. If something does happen, I just don't want to see Templeton spending hundreds of thousands of dollars and never ever recoup that money, whether it's open the order or pay us back or resell the property or whatever. I don't see any bright visions of any of that.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
So, so what I'm hearing is we can do it without touching ARPA?
Yes.
Wow.
That, that's his recommendation. I, I wanna, I wanna keep it as like people giving us, we're asking questions and otherwise. I don't want to make conclusions. We can, after the hearing is closed, we can talk about strategy. So if Bob, you're on mute. Did you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, that's about what I had. I just, there's a lot to think about. There's all different kinds of ideas out there. I think if we do the cheapest thing possible right now and ride this out and keep an eye on it. And if it comes to the point where we want to lower it, there is a way to lower it and control it without getting deeply into thousands of dollars.
Okay. Um, Tom, I got a question based on what Bob and Rich were talking through. If we decide to act with emergency prevention measures, so here we are in January. And only, uh, depending on what the Foxitani Phil says, in a couple of months, we're going to start to have spring melt and otherwise, which is going to be an increased increased threat level. If, if the town decides to enact some preventative measures, how does that process work? Do, do we just act unilaterally? Do we have to, then, then again, notify the landowner that says, we have found it, we have found it unsafe, or have we done that already? We have found it unsafe. And if you don't, we are going to then take measures to make it safe, regardless of what, you know, actions they take. Do they have like any kind of appeal? Do we have any kind of like cooling off period from a decision that we make?
They do. Yeah. So, so what we'd want to do is do it through this 139 process. So, you know, we, we may consider leaving the hearing open tonight. You know, as we kind of get more information, but you know, so say we wanted to do some, to start with some light measures, whatever that is, you know, tree trimming and, you, you know, I don't know. My suggestion would be to issue an order and tell, you know, we give him the order, he has, I think, three days to appeal. And if he doesn't appeal it, then we can go ahead. And Ryan's been doing some research while we've been talking and, and she has confirmed that whatever we spend to do these repairs, it becomes a debt owed by the landowner and can be committed to his tax bill. So it, it would be collectible through taxes. Again, it's just whether or not, you know, he walks away from it and kind of leaves us holding the bag a little bit.
Yeah. All right. I do not see Mr. Gabazati on. Is there any more presentation material? Bob, Rich, Tom, Ryan. Okay. Any, I don't see anyone on, that would be on for an, an opposing viewpoint. Luanne, I don't know if you wanted to add anything. Okay. So opposing viewpoint, I don't see, like I said, I don't see him on. So I'll go to the period of the questions. Does the board members have any questions? Remember, we're, we're, the, the public hearing is to, to gather information. We, we can deliberate and give guidance and direction outside of the public hearing. So is there any more questions? Okay, hearing none. I think we heard some final recommendations. Tom had made a recommendation pursuing chapter 139. And, and an order that we would draft along, basically it could be a collaboration. We could give you a rough, a rough magnitude of order this evening, and we would draft that order. There was a recommendation from Bob, Mr. Sozik to, to fix minimally or as low cost as possible. Giving that options could present itself over time. And Rich, did you have a final recommendation?
Well, I still strongly feel that if we're going to put money into it, knowing that we're not going to get it back from this guy. Because he has never paid, since he, the issue started with this guy, he has never paid any taxes. And I don't see him ever making an attempt to, to pay these taxes. And like I said, I think it's a hard sell of a piece of property. I don't think it's going to sell. I, I would rather have the town own it. If we're going to put money into it, own the thing. But that's just my opinion. We, we are running out, if you look around town, we're running out of water. Most of our ponds are starting to get filled with vegetation. Here's a body of water sitting there. It is what it is, I guess, but
All right.
That's, that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Rich. Before we close the public hearing, Terry, did you have a question?
Yeah, sorry. Mr. Harrington, what was the, what would be the purpose of leaving the meeting open? You mentioned leaving the meeting open.
If, if you, yeah, the hearing open. So if you wanted to gather more information on what you might want to do, there's, so you have the opportunity to close it. It might say, it sounds like you might be leaning in that direction and that's perfectly acceptable. If you wanted more information from Bob or Rich or me, you know, fine tuning what, what we might do, you could leave it open and, and take that information at a future here. So I, I guess, Terry, if I'm, if I'm kind of reading my crystal ball a little bit, this may be a step by step process. And in that case, this probably won't be the only chapter 139 hearing that we hold. So, and so you can make, you can make a decision now, and then in the future, you can hold another hearing and say, okay, now we're going to ramp it up a little bit or ramp it back a little bit. So I, I think you have that, that opportunity.
Tom, if we hold another hearing, do we have to reserve him with paperwork?
So we went through the extraordinary effort of doing the in hand service. And it did not bear fruit. So I, I'm not sure that I would advise in hand service next time. I think I would go with the state's model of sending it by certified mail to his, you know, kind of his last three addresses of record. We know where the police served him. So we, you know, I, I think we've got a decent address. We, you know, we can only do so much. And I, I guess, I think that was a, I think it was a good idea and a proper idea to do it this time. Not sure I'd do it again.
Okay. So we've got, we've got a couple of recommendations from our subject matter experts and counsel. Any last questions? Okay. I would move to close the public hearing on the depot pond dam.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any discussion on closing it? And I say close, Terry, you, I, even we're Zoom and we're, I'm not looking at you in, in person, but I can tell you've got that, that look on your face. I, I think we've got a, a, so not deliberating, we're talking about the motion to close. I think we've got a way forward.
I'm fine with it as long as we're not, I just wanted to double check that if we closed it, we still had recourse.
Yeah.
To help ourselves and not shut the door completely.
I'll explain in a moment why I think that we're, we're in a good position to move forward.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Harrington.
Any other discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Hearing none on the motion to public, close the public hearing for the depot pond dam. How do you vote, Julie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The public hearing is closed as of 7:18 PM. Okay. Some deliberation on depot pond dam. Folks, I all, I'm always going to think, what are the effects here? And if we have a potential for any kind of harm or, or catastrophic event for our residents, I want to make sure that we're taking appropriate action. Effective action, but also legally sufficient action. And I think we talked about some remedies, or at least a direction to go this evening, where we can achieve both. So I would recommend that we put a motion together where we're instructing the town administrator and town council to basically issue an order to Mr. Gabazati, instructing him to to take measures that would, in accordance with the the dam safety report that would render it safe. I would say within this order outside of the appeal, the town, or not hearing back, the town will make immediate immediate preventative measures. Temporary, immediate, immediate and temporary preventative measures to make it safe at such time that a a more comprehensive decision can be made for the disposition. Also, in that order, I don't know, team, I'm not going for April. I you know, if he's been nonresponsive, otherwise this basically does three months sound acceptable? This, you know, I I definitely don't think, okay, so three.
I'd ask Bob and Rich. I think three is reasonable, but does it need?
So the order would be, the order would be, you will do this at such time that you haven't after three months, we are going to start to charge, knowing we're not going to get it back. I don't know, a hundred dollars a day? If we're talking a daily fine, oh, Lori doesn't like that. How up, up? Go ahead, Julie.
I would say a thousand dollars a day. Sorry.
Okay. So after three months, any noncompliance, we would then start to charge or fine in accordance with 139, not our own bylaw, but chapter 139, sections one through three alpha, a thousand dollars a day until compliance. Meanwhile, team, if we're already taking the emergency measures and this order is telling that the landowner that we are taking action to make it safe, there still we're putting the responsibility on the landowner. But the town, you know, we're basically saying with under 139, we're taking actions to make this minimally safe. During that process, I think that we need, we do need to expend some money to figure out what is the best method. And if we don't expend money to get a study or otherwise, between a subject matter expert that I I have to say the state's got to give us a preferred vendor or otherwise, but discussions between Rich, Bob and Ed, Ed Connor and any other vendors that may have a specialty to take a look at this, like Ty and Bond. If Ty and Bond looks at this and says, if you just take it out, that is going to be the most economical and safe for your residents. Let's figure that out. We might be, you know, it may take six months to get to that, but at least we're going to have the responsible party feet to the fire. We're holding the feet to the fire through a process, but at the same time, we're taking action to to immediately remove any any danger that there may be, especially in springtime. And then the long range plan, we have to plan for it and there's some risk there. There money wise, I get it that there's risk. But again, I'm thinking of I'm thinking of the the safety issue that it poses. So team, that's what I would propose.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So whatever you decide to find them per day, per month, per week, whatever. Okay, say he doesn't respond and we go and make those temporary measures. Is this finding going to continue after that or when does that start?
If he didn't, if in the order drafted and served, if he didn't appeal within the three days, on day four, I could do any kind. I'm basically telling him I'm going to do whatever is necessary to make it immediately safe. Rich was talking about that could be cutting back some of the vegetation. It could be loading some backfill on the other side of it to at least reduce the the danger. It may not so solve the problem, but it's going to reduce the danger. We're still going to do that. And after, you know, one month goes by, maybe we do that. Maybe we get a vendor that cuts back the the vegetation and we do the backfill. Two months goes by, still still nothing for Mr. Gabazati. Three months goes by. At that point, we say, you know, we told you, you're now in noncompliance. The fines are going to start. We then kind of we're understanding the direction at this point that the the landowner is not taking responsibility. At that point, we have to really consider what is the way ahead? We've made immediate measures to to protect the public. Now, what is the long range measure? Let me go by hands raised. Rich, go ahead first.
Okay, in my discussion with Ed Connor this afternoon, he suggested that we not do anything to the dam to make any changes until we've had an engineering study done. Because if we, for example, increase the height of the dam itself and then backfill behind the dam to give it a wider, stronger breadth to it. He said, you may be just covering up issues that the engineer would want fixed, then you're going to have to pull it all apart and do it anyway. So he said, well, we've got some significant leakage. There's at least three places that is running through that dam right now. He doesn't think it would be a wise idea to backfill behind the dam until we've had it looked at.
Okay. Then we'd have to, you know, act a little bit differently. Tim, go ahead.
Thank you to Mr. Zo's point and to Mr. Curtis's point. And this may be something we have to have counsel weigh in on as well. I understand the concern and if we're going to do an interim and emergent measure, is that merely slapping a Band-Aid that is not the owner taking responsibility and correcting? So I would defer this one to counsel. If we do that, can we continue to assess the daily fine until it is rectified by the property owner? And I see the head shaking up and down. Yes.
Absolutely.
To Mr. Curtis's point, I would have to agree. So we get an engineering study and understand what we can do and what needs to be done. The last thing we want to do is throw a Band-Aid on and we'll just have to turn around and rip off and throw good money at a bad situation. If there's not a correct answer, but I'm trying to make this the best, most informed and what's got the best outcome for the community.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. I get the so for anyone listening and for the the people that we have, if we don't do an emerge act and do a emergency fix, the Band-Aid that you were talking about, we will be in your packet this evening. You will see that emergency management has come up with an incident management plan should something happen. So that is the contingency. If we're not going to cut vegetation and backfill it, at least we have a plan that we would be able to enact if something did happen prior to the landowner taking responsibility or ultimately the town taking any action. So that that should at least allay anyone's fears that, you know, we're not saying that we're not going to do anything or or consider whether we're going to spend money on a study. We do have the A plan. We just need to make sure that we're also moving forward legally. That's why I recommended a a drafted order from between Adam and town council with the the guidance that we give tonight. But that is a good point, Tim, Rich and Bob. Terry, did you have a question?
Yeah, I thought I heard Rich say that he could we could lower or Bob say we could lower the water table without backfilling. And I know that everybody's really upset about Mr. Gabazada. But kicking him when he's down might not get him to want to respond to us. I would agree to putting what we have to invest in the problem on his tax bill. But I think that some some clemency or mercy might get his attention.
No, he hasn't taken any responsibility. He hasn't even backed. He didn't join us tonight.
I well, if if I was in prison or whatever the situation behind the story, you know, I would be feeling pretty low at this time.
Good. Thank you, Terry. All right, well, I'm gonna I know that we've got some other business tonight. I would make a motion for a town administrator and town council to draft an order to Mr. Gabazati, instructing the landowner to make immediate repairs in accordance with the dam safety report. And that the town has an incident management plan should anything critically occur to the dam, meaning we would take action. And then if the landowner does not act within 90 days of issuing the order, the town will then impose fines of $1,000 a day until the the dam is addressed and made safe in accordance with the dam safety report.
And I will second that motion 100%.
Thank you, Julie. Any discussion? We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Did I leave anything out? Terry, do you think there's a go ahead, Rich?
Do you think 90 days is going too far? Only because, you know, you're looking at spring melt, rise in water. Usually when we start having beaver problems, it's early to mid spring. You know, we're probably looking at having to take some sort of an action possibly around that time.
I I would just have it in the in the the drafted order that the town has instituted an incident management plan to deal with any immediate problems. So
Any catastrophic failure.
Any catastrophic failure. So basically, we're not telling them that we're going to fix it, but we do have an incident management plan to protect people. You know, if you put, you've got to, I I know that you'll use language that, you know, stresses the the severity of the situation.
And he'll be responsible for the costs and the and if there's any casualties.
Tim, go ahead.
To Mr. Curtis's point with the spring runoff and the snowmelt, I just did some quick and dirty calculations based on my training and experience in a former lifetime. A 12 inch pipe unrestricted flow is 4,700 gallons a minute, 282,000 gallons per hour. And Mr. Curtis had presented to us that the pond fills faster than that and that 12 inch opening really is not bringing it down as efficiently or sufficiently. So I would have, I would have to agree with Mr. Curtis. We should probably accelerate the timeline. I would be in favor of maybe 60 days personally.
I agree with less time, 90, I think is too much.
Okay, I am in my motion to 60 days.
Second act.
Thank you very much, Julie.
Does that make sense to you, Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes, 60 days is good.
Adam, Tom, do you have enough to go on with what I've said?
We should be fine now. Are we doing this the same way where I'm signing this letter as well?
Yeah, and the authority for Adam to sign.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Okay. Anything further, team?
I just wanted to say thank you, Tom. I appreciate all of your input on this. And Bob, I totally agree with you that if you can get in there at a lower cost at the 5,500 to 6,500, like, like, we need to look at that when the time comes. I mean, obviously, we want to go cheaper before we go higher, especially if the town's going to take on that front, the financial piece of this whole thing.
Yeah. Totally agree.
I'd like to see the draft. If the team would entrust at least just a a quick review of the draft before it goes out. Okay, on the motion for the town administrator and town council to draft an order to Mr. Gabazati instructing for the immediate repair or immediate repair of the the depot pond dam and that the the town has and it reserves the right to act within a critical failure incident management plan and for the landowner to comply with such order within 60 days and on the 61st day would start to include a daily fine of $1,000. And that's been seconded. How do you vote, Julie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Good job, team. I think that was an effective hearing and some good deliberation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Adam.
Not sure. Do we jump over the minutes?
No, we did the minutes.
Okay.
Did I? Did I? Yeah, Justice is shaking his head. Yes.
Okay.
I know I went through them. Pretty sure we voted them to. Okay. Tom or Ryan, did you have anything else on the agenda tonight?
No, we're happy to check out if you'd like us to.
Yep, we're we're good. You guys have got your your work. Thank you very much for all the research you've done on this. Like Adam said, at least we were able to serve. That was a positive development in this whole thing. But again, just making sure the residents feel like that this is being addressed and I think we're doing a good job of that. Okay. All right, Tom, Ryan, have a great night.
Thanks very much, everybody.
Ryan, good job on the research on the survey.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, Rich, you don't have a problem hanging out for just a little bit longer?
Also.
All right, so we we finished the public hearing and the deliberation. We are now going into three presentations, the first of which is the FY22 second quarter development services report. Mrs. Wood, how are you this evening?
Great. Not not as heavy of a load as what you're dealing with with the depot pond dam. So let's see. We completed our proposed budget for the fiscal year '23 and we had the opportunity to participate in some of the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commission trainings that had come up. Myself, the chairman and our administrative assistant, Just Case, all took some of the courses, very interesting. We completed the annual reports for our departments and boards and commissions that fall under development services, prepared for and attended the Fall Town Meeting with town council and town administrator. We worked on a cease and desist for 25 Central Street, which we hand delivered and posted on the door for operation of an unlicensed business in a building that is, I don't know if it's in tax title, but there's a lot of taxes due. We also, Just Case and myself, attended courses through MRPC for zoning and planning on special permits and variances, which was also very enlightening. With COVID-19, we are very fortunate in October, November and December near Gansett Regional School District with the school nurses and CVS hosted COVID clinics and regular flu clinics. And as you said, there's another one in February. Pfizer vaccine was approved for children five to 11. We also stopped receiving reports on specific numbers for Templeton through Mass DPH through the Maven site. That was they were experiencing overwhelming cases and the contact tracers themselves were using the information. They still have not allowed people who weren't using it back in. I can't see the numbers. The numbers are going, starting to go down. So we're using the state information. We continue to participate in the weekly Mass DPH meetings. I participated in a surgeon general seminar for our older, our senior citizens, which was very interesting. And we answered a lot of questions on the supply of test kits for poverty level cities and towns, which Templeton is not one of. So we did answer a lot of those questions. With the building commissioner, we had 68 permits processed in the second quarter that included new single family dwellings, roofing, windows, sheds, additions, sheet metal renovations. We collected a total of $22,567 in fees and that's on estimated work of $3,280,000. Five occupancy permits were issued, 34 certificates of completion. Five occupancy permits were issued, thirty-four certificates of completion. Wiring processed forty-three permits. That was a total of five thousand three forty in fees. Plumbing and gas was fifty-four permits, total of six thousand eighty-five. The Rhonda processed applications for safety inspections and the building commissioner and fire chief completed those. There were no major violations noted. There were a few things fixed at a couple of places, but nothing that stopped them from being completed. Ag Commission continued to assist the Board of Health with some issues with runaway roosters and chickens. Zoning Board of Appeals heard one ninety-five Brooks Road, they were looking for a change to the current use. The decision was made to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's letter of recommendation that it's not zoned properly for that. Planning had ANRs for Patriots Road and Philipston Road. The chair and I met with Tesla over at Cumberland Farms. They're looking to install charging stations.
Fantastic.
It is. It'll be interesting. The planning board had an opportunity to do training through MRPC. Bruce Marion, who is one of the members, attended, as well as myself and Jess. Conservation had two sidewalks for new single-family homes. They did eleven sidewalks for existing properties. Three notices of intent were processed for Patriots Road and School Street. There were, and when I say negative findings for determinations, it means that there was no further action required for Berry Road and Baptist Common Lot Four. There was a certificate of compliance issued to Brooks Road Lot D. The chair attended the MAC, the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commission's conference. He participated in three online courses. We had a hiccup with the forestry plan down on Patriots Road with Barclay, who's putting in the houses. Agent Downey, the state forester, contacted us. The violations were corrected and they moved forward.
What was the nature of the violations?
They went within the wetlands.
Okay.
We're still working on the North Main, Otter River, and Lord median area where it floods. We did the plans that were on file from, I'm sorry, I can't remember what year they were done. But those were located, so they can be reviewed and hopefully reapplied by the Conservation Commission. So there were some engineering plans done that we have. Board of Health, Title V reports keep coming in, people still selling and buying. Approved plans for two septic repairs and three new septic systems. We were still doing park tests. Three of those were completed. One was canceled due to a boundary dispute over on Partridgeville Road. We did do some beaver trapping over on Royal St. Road. Worked with the AG's office, reassessed, let's see, Twenty-Nine Sawyer, Twenty-Three Shore, Twenty-Eight Elbra, and Ninety-Six Hubbardston. They are also looking at Sixteen Liberty, which is in tough shape. Pre-rental housing at Baldwin, the Heatherwood Apartments. And completed the fishing game tight tank alarms for DEP and inspected the wellhead. There were no violations. We issued a letter to DEP as we do annually. And that's pretty much my excitement for the second quarter.
All right, I just have a quick question. The Patriots Road lots that Van Dyke put in, basically cleared that whole area. I see at least three houses. I saw one on Zillow already. So it looks like only the snow is slowing them down. Are you aware of, what is, do they have a plan? I know that the Ames House structure is still there. There is a plan in, what is the plan for that?
The plan for that is, it's actually on the Massachusetts Historical Register. So the plan is for them to sell it to someone who wants to restore it. They have, I gave them a couple of names of people who were interested. I don't have an update on that. I don't know.
I just wanted to know what the direction was.
It's gonna stay.
Great. That'll make a lot of people in town happy. I know that we were kind of, not caught off guard, but it was like, hey, you do remember when we pulled that out, when we pulled it out of the, Luanne, what's the name of the chapter? Like all the, the line behind it. It's like chapter sixty? No, I don't remember.
Sorry, sixty-one.
Yeah, sixty-one. Oh, it was close.
You were?
So thank you for that update. I didn't have any further questions for Lori. Anyone else?
Yeah, Lori, I just was wondering if you put in for the certificate of compliance when you sent in the final fishing game report.
I actually, every time I send in the letter, because you guys, the fishing game has been in compliance ever since I've been here, I always ask for it to be released. And I never hear anything. DP never contacts me. You, it might be warranted for Templeton Fishing Game to make a trip down on the days that they have open office hours.
Thanks.
Right, Lori, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time. Um, let's see, on the agenda, we've got Oh, I'm sorry, Julie, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay, Mike. I didn't notice that you missed that. Thank you, Terry. I just wanted to thank Lori and commend her for her outstanding performance as a town employee for the last couple of years. And I am one of your biggest cheerleaders. And, you know, if residents of the town are watching right now, they need to realize just how dedicated Lori is and how many hours effortlessly, without complaint, she has put in since COVID struck. She needs to be recognized for that whenever the opportunity comes up, in my opinion. So thank you, Lori.
I agree.
Your service is much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, our report last, our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty report actually called out all of the people that played huge roles, Lori. A hundred percent with, and we called her out in the annual report, likely do the same thing, right? All right, thank you, Julie. Thanks, Lori. Next up is our second quarter report from Community Services. Good evening, Jackie.
Hello. So the library and assorted community services for this quarter, I was able to submit the final two reports to the state, which is what our certification is based on. Luanne Bankowski, our library assistant, has, she's continued to visit Narragansett Middle School every year to train the new middle schoolers on accessing e-materials on CW Mars and to make sure everybody's got a updated library card. So she did that. It's, I appreciate her dedication to that effort. I worked on the library's fiscal year twenty-three narrative and budget request. The farmer's market concluded for the season. I think overall, it was, it was very successful. Our scarecrow and apple pie contest was not as successful, but Terry was nice enough to brainstorm a few ideas to try to make it better next year. So we'll take another shot at that. And I was part of a group that's been meeting to talk about plans to improve Houghton Park. And then several of my units attended the all-boards meeting, which was, was great. Over on the senior center, they held a flu shot clinic. They had a bunch of other new additional programs. Gail Noel, our shine volunteer, was crazy busy with appointments to assist seniors with Medicare and insurance questions. Cindy's always had a steady stream of fuel assistance and SNAP applicants. Transportation is just crazy. It was crazy that quarter. There was a turkey dinner provided prior to Thanksgiving by the Templeton Lions and the Otter River Sportsman's Club. Now, it was really nice to gather again. And the center, in addition to other Christmas programs, they offered a holiday movie and cocoa as part of the town's tree lighting ceremony. And I can tell you that was really well attended and everybody seemed to have a great time. So looking forward to that next year, right, Terry?
Great, too.
For anyone that gives support for, so for like the Lions, and I'm sure that we've done before for them and the Otter River Sportsman's Club, like we've, like we did for the fifth grade, if we can do like a certificate of appreciation from the town, we get some signatures on it or otherwise. I don't, I don't want to, these organs, I don't want to. It's so awesome that they do it, and I know that they get thanks, but I want to make sure that we officially recognize it as well. Whether it's local businesses or otherwise, that way they put it up on the wall. They know that they're a part of the community and that they're appreciated. So I can work with you and Adam about making some certificates. Adam's good at it at this point. Exceptional at it at this point, but let's make sure that we do that, especially for all the people that have been donating things.
Great idea.
Thanks.
Sheila couldn't be here tonight, so the veterans, she was helping with VA claims as usual this quarter. She handed over the coffee social and luncheon to the Legion. She did deliver some Thanksgiving food boxes and Christmas food boxes. She was the guest speaker at the Veterans Day Ceremony, and it was great. She did a really amazing talk about women in the military. Yeah, that was great. And she has worked, continued to work with the Friends of the Templeton veterans. And she shared the Templeton Public Property Use Policy, the new policy that you all created with some of the local veteran organizations that probably needed to be aware of that, so. Cultural Council real quick, and then Steve can jump in.
Excuse me, Jackie, did you skip rec?
Oh, rec. Sorry. Yeah, rec. Thanks. Soccer concluded with over a hundred children participating. It went really well. It really went smoothly. Everyone was thrilled to be back in a, you know, in that environment. We started to get preparation underway for basketball. Construction began on the ice rink at Houghton Park. And unfortunately, after a concerted effort by many, many individuals and a lot of time and a lot of water, we have decided that the rink will not be open this winter, unfortunately, yeah.
I just got my skates back from being chapped and today.
We are gonna really try to sharpen our pencils and figure out what we need to do to make, make it a success next year. If that's something that your board and, and the town decides they want to move forward with. So, yeah, wasn't for lack of trying, believe me.
Even, they handed out candy canes at the tree lighting. The ref department handed out candy canes at the tree lighting over at Houghton Park and.
Got a great commission, yeah. And actually, they, they've been pursuing team sponsorships among local businesses, which that's been such a huge success. So they're, they're a hardworking board. Lot of great ideas, lot of energy, so more good things to come from them. Cultural Council of the quarter was light with events. The council met twice to review applicants. They did have a new member, and they are still in need of additional members because there is a limit on the terms for some of their members and, and a few of the current members are aging out. And they need, they need to have a full board.
Okay.
So that's everything from my people, other than Steve, if anyone has any questions.
I didn't. Thank you, Jackie. Anyone else?
Not a question, just a comment. Thank you for the comprehensive report. It's another department that's been exceptionally busy.
All right, Steve, I think the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. And thank you, everyone. I hope everyone's well. So the TCTV report, we've been busy with sponsorships in the second quarter. Cypress Physical Therapy sponsored a Stay Fit with Liz program. It's an exercise class that took place at the senior center. And Liz reports that people are coming into the Cypress Therapy Office in Athol and asking if she's the person on TV.
Yeah, right. That's great.
So that's awesome to hear because people are watching Channel Eight and apparently exercising and going to physical therapy. We also are working with Wichita Business Incubator on a big sponsorship. We actually billed seven thousand dollars today. And we'll be doing several business shows for them and a couple of trailers. Crows did a sponsorship of photo contests, a couple of photo contests for us in the fall. And we're talking with MWCC Workforce Development about a robotics program. And I'd really like to get into doing remote online learning videos with them as well. So we'll see where that goes. And I have to get back to the website development, but it is in development. We have to make a couple of big decisions about some things, and hopefully we'll have that live sometime in the spring. As you can see, we did a lot of programs. Thirty-three meetings in a quarter is a little bit above average. October and November were quite busy. And even though we don't have all the activities in Templeton during the pandemic, we had plenty to keep us busy, and some things fall through the cracks. We still have to deal with getting Lucy Stone Tea out there, but it's a nice program. And as soon as we can get our new guy Logan back in the town hall office, he'll finish up the cool car show for Motopalooza. So we've been doing training all around, research and development. Dan is on a remote system we bought for Live Switch Productions that I don't understand, so I'm hoping that he can understand it and teach me and the staff how to use it. And as some people know, in November, our fiber connector electronics at the TV station quit on us and Comcast was kind enough to replace it. However, we found out that even the replacement is hard to get because it's kind of outdated.
Yeah.
So we actually will eventually probably need a fiber encoder. And I found out that Comcast charges other stations as much as thirty-three thousand dollars for it. So I'm told that's something to do in negotiations. However, as soon as they give me some estimates for some other ARPA-related funds that we asked them about, we'll look into that as well. But the picture is much better now on Channel Eight because of the new, the new old connector, I guess. And we've been doing some other things as well. And speaking of ARPA research, I've been doing that. So that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Steve, would you like a copy of the five hundred and seventy-one page final ruling?
I think, I think I've read through it.
You're ahead of me. I have not gotten the whole thing yet.
I'm still trying to make sense of parts of it. Yes, thank you, Tim.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Steve.
You're welcome.
Community Services, great job. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. All right, we're gonna move on, and we've got our financial report for second quarter with us this evening. I can see we've got Kelly. How are you, Kelly? And we've got Luanne. Kelly, I think you're up first.
Yeah, and Cheryl is on vacation, so.
All right.
So the quarter for my office, the second quarter is always very busy. Um, I did travel to Massachusetts for the Fall Town Meeting and was there for the audit. Um, for all the field work. Um, everything went very well this year. We're again, we were waiting on Waters. Audit to be completed in order to our, for ours to be completed. Um, so everything is done, but now we're kind of back in the queue for them to complete. The files, so um I'm hoping next year that maybe we can come up with a new plan to possibly. You know, maybe we do it in November, maybe by then the water audit will be done and hopefully we can just get it all done in one full week and be done. Um, that's kind of my thought process for next year. Um. And then um one of the biggest projects that um I was able to complete finally in this quarter was the CARES Funds reconciliations. Um, so we did receive an additional four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, we used um, you know, we, our allocation was seven hundred and eighteen thousand. And we used six eighty-four, so we only left thirty, roughly thirty-five thousand. Um, you know, on the table that we weren't able to use, which I think that was, we did a really good job with that.
Unbelievable.
So anyway, that's all done. We've got one last bill to pay and I think I'm within pennies of um what will be done once that bill's done. Um. And then um Luann, Cheryl and I worked on the tax rate recap this year. And it went very, very smoothly and there was no stress. We got it done and, you know, way order time and able to get the bills out on time and. It was just nice to not have any stress this year with that.
Agreed.
Um, my assistant Lisa resigned for a new position closer to home. Um, so I ended up working like I was doing, you know, when I left Mass was doing both jobs. Um, you know, and that was very stressful again, but you know, managed and um also had my knee replaced um in the last quarter.
I did not know that. I read the report and I said, yeah.
So I was out for about a week and a half, but uh back on track and doing great and I can walk two to three miles now. It's an amazing feat.
I'm glad that went well.
So that went well. Um, so then um for the expenditure trends, a lot of it is the same stuff that we have, you know, in the first part of the year is the software costs take up so much expense. The first part that it kind of, you know, shows that we've spent more, but um it's really a one-time expense. Um. The only one um that's kind of different is emergency management. And that's because Rich is in Florida and so he spends a lot before he leaves, so it always looks like he's uh way ahead of his spending.
Right.
Um, so really, I mean, that it was very little that's really at the over the fifty percent mark this time, so it's again, it's most of the software.
Yeah, Kelly, if I can just jump in very quickly on. Those situations, I think all of the department heads do a good job when we do our budget briefs, when we have our our budget day. Um, that is actually briefed. They say, this is what I, you know, I expend a lot in the first or in second quarter. So this is just evidence. Um, to us, the advisory and to anyone that's watching. Um, that you, you know, this occurs. It happens the way that you say it's gonna happen and I just wanted to make that point. So, yeah, thank you for putting these explanations in.
Yeah, that's good. Um, so on the revenue trends, we're right at forty-eight percent, so we are a little bit behind, but you know, nothing to be worrying about. Um, there's a couple of items to note that I wanna make, you know, again. You know, Cheryl has just, she is doing an amazing job in clearing up tax title. Um, you know, I, right now, in just for a half of a year, she's almost collected a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and again, that all goes to free cash. That's, you know, bonus money that we don't, you know, expect to get. Um, so and then we've almost reached the budget for the males tax. Which, you know, that that means people are out and they're eating and they're, you know, doing those things and. You know, so we're not, you know, we were all concerned with the COVID that that was gonna be a big hit for us. Um, and it was not, so it's it's continuing to do very well.
Yep, I remember those discussions, yep.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, so that's pretty much it, not, you know, not a tremendous amount. Um, so then I'll turn it to Luann and then I'll take care of Cheryl's.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for all the backup information in the packet as well.
You're welcome.
Hi, Luann.
Hi, guys. How you doing?
Great.
Um, as usual, the annual report was reviewed and signed by the Board of Assessors and we submitted that to the Select Board by the end of October. Like Kelly spoke of, our classification hearing went real well in October. Um, we were able to submit everything in and got a tax rate set on November tenth. Which the tax rate went down this year eighty-three cents to fifteen dollars and twenty-four cents. Um, my usual spiel to you guys is when the tax rate goes down, most likely all our values in town went up. Which is the case this year. Um, anywhere from ten percent to probably thirty, thirty-five percent and people's property values went up. So people got hit hard. But again, because of the drop of the eighty-six in the tax rate, it didn't hit them quite as bad as you thought it would. Um, those were using sales based off the two thousand and twenty. So again, if you look at what happened last year in twenty-one, sales were off the chart again, so just projecting for next year, you'd probably look at again, your tax values on your properties are gonna be going up again from what we can tell. Um, always the bearer of bad news, I guess, so. Uh, again, thanks to Kelly and Cheryl, tax rate setting went great. You know, we submitted everything, not many questions came back and. It was nice. It was a very smooth process. Uh, third and fourth quarter tax bills went out on time. Everything was sent to the billing companies mid-December. We set a billing date, Cheryl and I, for the bills to go out the last week of December. Um, we didn't wanna really hit the people before the holidays and everybody expects them to go out, so we just waited till the twenty-eighth of December for all of them to go out. So uh that went really well. Um, I had a lot of um exemptions this year. I also had nine seniors working in the senior work-off program this year, which is good because for the last three years, I've only always had two. So on the counseling, not the counseling, the senior center is really pushing for a lot of my senior residents to come in and do a senior work-off, which works great. We had a couple working in Town Hall. Bob Zosik had a guy working out doing lawn mowing. The senior center had probably five or six people work at there, so it really worked out really well and. Hopefully we can push because we do vote to have twenty people work in the senior work-off program, which each can get five hundred dollars off their taxes. So that worked out really well and hopefully next year we'll be able to get as many or more seniors to do this as part of a break on their taxes. This is our sixth year in our solar pilot program that we have with um Sunny Templeton, the solar farm up on Farnsworth Road, so they continue to be paying each year that amount that they pay us always goes up a few hundred dollars, so that's money always coming into the year and it's always over ten thousand dollars a year. That comes in on their solar pilots. Uh, let's see, I did a fifth commitment for motor vehicles, which brought in, because we run on a calendar year when we figure motor vehicle excise and. As of the end of uh November, we had assessed over one point two million dollars in motor vehicle excise that's coming into the town. Of that, I've only had twenty-six thousand dollars that we've had to abate off of people either getting rid of their vehicles, selling, totaling or whatever, so that's pretty good. Um, we, in our chapter land, like Mike had spoke earlier, I had new, three new residents come into town with new forestry plans, which is nice. Any of our residents that have a ten-plus acres of forestry. Putting into chapter kind of guarantees they're they're preserving the land and we're not gonna get it developed because these people go into the agreement knowing that. If they do take it out of their ten-year plans, they are hit hard on the taxes for a penalty for doing it. So. It's kind of nice with all the new construction in town to actually see some. Of the other homeowners taking the advantage of what they can do by putting their properties in chapter land. Um, also I have one that put it in recreational land too. So that was good too. Um. Budgets were sent and given to the town administrator for next year. Um, my board continues to do their monthly meetings in Town Hall, so we're still doing those. I've been out straight crazy through October through November doing property visits, not only with all the new construction. But as of December, there was almost three hundred building permits pulled in the town for the year, so we're also out checking all those properties, so. I've been pretty busy going out and measuring people's, everything they're doing, decks and porches and inside and roofs and. So it's been very, very busy in our office.
That new vehicle is is working out well in that respect?
Yes, I haven't actually, we didn't get the car till towards the end of last year, so hopefully I'm getting to. Lori will let me use it for a little while, but she's very willing to share, which is nice, so I don't have to go out, but it's nice. Um, I had a lot of Zoom meetings and webinars as I had to um get my recertification, which I was recertified in October this year, which is again, good for two more years.
Congrats.
Um, I've had my first ever appellate tax board case that I was brought, my board, not myself, was brought to appellate tax board this year. Um, we had our hearing in October and when I put this newsletter, my. Briefing out to you, we hadn't heard from the appellate tax board, but I just did that notification two weeks ago that they ruled in favor of the town. So not only my first one, we also won it, which is a good plus for us. So I was happy, the board was happy and it's always nice to have that. Um, right now, at the end of the year, we are submitting a lot of paperwork out to all our business owners, all our personal property owners, sending in required documents that have to be back in our office by the beginning of March, so. Even though the tax rate set season's over with, we're getting a lot more paperwork and we just continue to flow into the next part of the office phase. Um, my values for twenty-two have been closed out in my real estate program and if you go onto a cartographics mapping website, it'll tell you all the new property owners' names and all the new values for fiscal twenty-two. Also, I'm in the process of working on all the mapping changes, which legally I can't do anything until January first. And I usually work on them all the month of January and those will be updated on Cartographics probably by mid-February, so everything up online is current with values and current with owners. Um, other than that.
Is that the access?
Is that the GIS? Yeah, same thing, yeah, and which is used through Mass GIS and everything, so it's real important that we keep that right up, you know, on.
I love it. I, it's my go-to. When, whenever we have issues come before the board, I'm able to be, to do a fair amount of research using that information, so. Having it updated and and the fidelity that we place in it is, it's pretty important.
So, yeah, and the only thing we don't do online with that is put on the property record cards that have an actual sketch of the buildings.
Hmm.
But yeah, that would be a major financial cost to the town, so we just let it out there that if you need a property record card, no problem.
I know exactly what you're saying. I've seen other towns do that and um I I I don't, I don't know if it it. I don't know if what the value added would be. I I think we can gain what we can out of it right now. Um, especially knowing that it's a great cost. I I think we're fine.
We are, and like I say, the realtors and appraisers call me and if I'm in the office, they get their turn around a property card within a half hour to an hour if I'm not doing anything, so. It's nothing holding up anybody, so financially, I think it's a good thing just keeping the way it is. So other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it and if not, that's our report for the assessors.
Terry, Rich, Julie, anything? No, nothing from Julie. Thank you from Terry.
Thanks, Luann.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luann. Have a good night.
You too.
And um finishing up the financial report, Kelly said she was gonna walk through Cheryl's report.
Yeah, um, so the property taxes for the second quarter of FY twenty-two and sewer bills were due, so her office was very, very busy with that. Um, she did have the delinquent properties for FY twenty-one. Um, sixty-two properties went into the newspaper for um. You know, for advertising that they, we were gonna take them. Um, and only forty-nine ended up being leaned. The rest of those, the difference um came in and took care of their tax bill. So, you know, I guess seeing their name in the paper makes the, it makes an impression on a lot of people. Um. And then um she's also been working um with the attorneys on foreclosure properties. Um, you know, in the last couple of years, you know, the, we've been fortunate enough to have enough free cash to put enough money. Aside for her to be able to do this because the legal bills, you know, they do get very expensive. Um, and so letters have been mailed to those residents. Um, and she has been getting response. Um, a few of those have even paid off. Um, the excise commitments um and excise demands were issued this quarter. Um, bills for the third and fourth quarter, real estate, um personal property were mailed the last week of December, as Luann said. Um, the third quarter is gonna be due February first. Um, they had a hundred and thirty-three municipal lien certificates were prepared in a quarter, so that means that you've got a hundred and thirty-three people. Um, that are selling their house. Um, so that, that's a lot for a quarter. Um, and then she's got the collections listed there um for the different, you know. Different categories that we collected through the quarter.
Yep.
Okay, so um. I just wondered if you all had any questions on the expenditure report or the revenue report. Um. And then I just wanna do a quick um look-see at the special articles report. Um, I just wanna make sure that um everybody understands what that is. Those are the special articles that um are voted at town meeting. And it's where the project is and it's in its uh status. So that you're aware, um, you know, when you're looking at that every month and you see it's like, okay, why isn't this going down? It could be it's out to bid, it could be that the price has changed, there can be all different kinds of things. Um, so that, this report then gives you that information so that you're aware um where the prog, you know, where we are in the progress. Of those uh things. You know, a lot of them, um, like one of them. The mini split, you know, it's finally out to bid, you know, but that's gonna now take the process to come in and then it has to be awarded. Um. And then we've got um. The money for the senior center. Um, that twenty thousand is sitting there. It's waiting for either. To be used on the roof or the kitchen, so it's, you know, the decision has to be made as to where that money. What's gonna be more important, you know, is the roof, can it be prepared enough that, you know, we don't need to do that or. Either kitchen or whatever, so those decisions have to be made before that money can be used. Um. And then um. On the second page. The um, it will like at the top where you see the twenty-twenty-one tax title work, that's the ongoing project. You know, a lot of sometimes, you know, she'll be able to spend that probably in three bills from the attorneys.
Wow, okay.
So. And then um the Narragansett Regional Agreement, again, that's an in-prostate, in-process thing that's continuing. Um. The fire station um. Exhaust, um, we're getting updated bids. Um, a lot of them, they're on order. Um, you know, we were to receive them, but we didn't yet, so. We're working on that, as you know, with everything else, everything is on back order. Um. But this just kind of gives you, you know, an idea of where these projects are so that you don't, you know, you do know they are being worked on, but there's a reason why. Um, they uh, you know, the the amount isn't going down or, you know, because sometimes apparently, you know, it takes a while. Unfortunately, to get things moving and get, especially if it's a large dollar, we've gotta go out for procurement and. Make sure that we've got the, you know, the bid packets and all of that, so it's a process for a lot of these projects.
Yeah, Kelly, I'm glad you walked us through that, um even putting up on the screen. Um. Again, these packets, I I say it when we open the meeting. Um. This, these are all public documents, so we, we all have our internal mail, we get the BVA, we get, we share reports, but this packet being out there, I I very much appreciate it because. For people that are scratching their head or trying to figure out what it, what's going on, that far right-hand column gives an idea of what what's going on. Uh, and uh one of the things I I enjoy seeing is the completed. You had a bunch of those things like the, the police radios um. That, that shows, um, it shows them the process that, you know, hey, we're, we're going out to bid or it's completed or uh not, you know, not started yet. So thank you for walking us through that.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Kelly? Kelly filling in for Cheryl.
Yeah.
She's probably on vacation watching us, right?
She is, she is in California visiting her daughter.
Yeah, then she's not watching us.
No, probably not.
Yeah, it's six o'clock there, so yeah, she's not watching us. All right, anything else for Kelly? All right, uh, finance team, thank you very much for joining us this evening. Uh, again, thank you very much for the reports. Uh, I forget who said it earlier, very uh in-depth. Um, and it's good to to be able to review those together, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a great night.
Bye.
You too. You too.
Will you make sure that this gets put up on the website and then can you send a copy to the advisory committee? For me, because my, it's too big for my email to send. So I don't know if yours can do that.
Was that to Adam?
It was to Justice. I figured.
Oh, Justice.
Be doing that. Okay.
Yep, thanks. Big thumbs up. Okay.
Okay. You guys have a great night.
You too, bye Kelly.
Bye.
Good night. Bye, Luanne. All right, uh, we are, we are through our presentations. Um, we've got uh, action related to the incident management plan that we uh, that we referred to earlier. Um, that's in uh, response to the depot pond dam um, potential failure. Um, we've got Rich with us uh, this evening. Hopefully everyone had a chance to be able to read through it and understand it. We've got it in the packet, Rich. I can bring up anything on the screen. Uh, you don't have to walk us through the whole thing. Uh, do you want to give us a, like a thumbnail sketch of uh, the incident plan?
Sure. Uh, basically there is no preventive measures we can take with this thing. Uh, other than um, the very few things that are listed on the very first page in the introduction. Uh, we are closely monitoring it. Of course, we've slowed down a little bit because of the icing over of the pond. Um, there's been less activity there. So um, he's going up once every two weeks right now. Uh, but once the ice starts going out, we're going to probably start checking it two or three times a week again because the beavers literally take over right away. So that could be a problem. Um, we're actively discussing this thing with the town, uh, with the select board and, and with the town legal. So we're, we're keeping up with it. And we have served all the of butters, so to speak, of the down slide of that dam should have fail um, of the possibility of a breach. So that's, that's been done. Um, basically we repaired, we prepared this um, incident management plan just so that we have something in place should a failure occur. Uh, kind of gives what everybody's role and responsibilities are and it gives uh, a basis of what people should do as soon as that first notice comes in. And really that's about it. All the paperwork that is accompanying it uh, will be put into addendums. It'll be an ever-changing document and we'll keep track of the changes and whatnot. So it's just something for us to use as a guideline itself.
Rich, I appreciate the um, the roles and responsibilities. Uh, I think it was very well uh, written. You know, it was a, a plan to assess something that is uh, you know, it just cropped up. So uh, kudos to or your, and your team, if you used any members of your team uh, to put this together, but ultimately the roles and responsibilities and then reaching out to our external partners. I can see how we all work together, but it's those external partners that I think are going to be able to provide the technical uh, and potential, any um, any greater uh, response that we may need, whether it's uh, whether it's mutual aid from another community or we need the state to come in um, based on the severity of what happened. So I really appreciated the external uh, portion of that as well. Terry, Julie, or Tim, any um, any uh, reactions to the plan? Are you happy with it? If we're happy with it, then I would entertain a motion to uh, to accept it.
Great job. So moved.
Second, it's a very good-looking plan. It's obvious a lot of work went into it.
Great.
I agree as well. Looks great. I like this plan.
Great. I had the motion. Uh, Tim, did you say that you seconded it?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right. So the motion would be to approve the Town of Templeton Incident Management Plan for Depot Pond Dam uh, failure as presented and allow for updates as needed. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Um, how do you vote, Julie?
Sorry, yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Rich, thanks for hanging with us tonight and great job on that uh, report. I hope we don't have to enact it. But uh, it's, a-again, that's the name of the game, being prepared and having a contingency plan.
Okay. And also uh, when I do updates, I'll send them out electronically to all of you and Adam so that uh, you have an updated copy of what's going on.
Yep.
All right.
And if anything, if anything between you and Bob or in uh, Adam, if anything um, rises to our attention for the, the storm that we're supposed to be getting on Friday and Saturday, just let us know.
Will do.
Okay. Thanks for uh, hanging with us, Rich. Have a good night.
No problem.
Okay, uh, next item on the uh, agenda this evening is our uh, action related to the State House issue note. Adam, if you will.
Okay, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, I want to thank all those that were involved with this, our finance team and th- this took a lot of work, um, even work with the district to make sure that we had uh, MSBA that we got over one, one million dollars or one million seventy-five thousand roughly uh, coming in. Um, and, and you folks probably know uh, we had that ban of one point six seven five million uh, with the MSBA money that we received and the proceeds we have on hand. We were able to bring it down to a two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar general obligation State House serial loan note. Uh, which is great because it's workable for the tax rate, for the tax rate standpoint and uh, positions the town well to uh, develop other uses for debt dropping off shortly. Uh, this, this State House note will only run through fiscal year twenty-five. And you can still see the principal payments of seventy-five thousand um, for three of those years till it's paid off and the interest rate is pretty phenomenal. So um, something we, we got ahead of. Um, something we wanted to do short, sooner rather than later, as you folks know. Um, who knows where interest rates are going? So we, we got it in, in time and um, this is something that we can certainly absorb. And the folks at Hilltop Securities were excellent when we went out through the process. That's all I really got on it.
Any questions for Adam?
Still being the rookie, can I say impressive?
Thanks, Terry.
Okay. Um, I would entertain a motion for the State House issue note.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Tim.
I move to award the two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar State House serial loan note dated February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. The notes for the bidder submitting the bid attached here to related to the notes.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Thank you, Julie. Any further questions? Hey, hearing none on the motion to award the two twenty-five K State House serial loans notes dated February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Known as the notes to the bidder submitting the bid attached here to relating to the notes. How do you vote, Julie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Uh, thanks for your work on that, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if uh, you, you probably are familiar at some point, if you could swing by the office to sign those.
Okay.
I'll have those ready.
All right. Okay, next item uh, on our agenda this evening, very exciting, is action. We've got uh, kind of a two-parter. It's action related to a request for ARPA funds for purchase of COVID nineteen test kits. Adam or Lori?
I'll give this one to Lori. Uh, this, this actually a great opportunity. Uh, the mayor of Gardner reached out to us and I, I, I gotta say this because I say this on our regional calls too. Um, the mayor of Gardner has been phenomenal working with the towns, not only Templeton, but the surrounding communities. And I know Lori has a lot of positive things to say about his administration as well, but they, they reached out. The mayor actually personally called our office and reached out and um, I discussed it with Lori and Lori and I were actually, I think Tim was actually in the office too when the mayor.
He was.
Mayor. So um, with this Lori, you want to take it?
Sure. So as Adam said, um, and I, I believe Senator Gobi was behind this too. She worked very hard to uh, facilitate and make sure that the smaller towns in the area were able to hop on. Um, and Mike picked right up and said, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna order a full pallet, which is fifteen thousand test kits. And we threw a um, memorandum of understanding can hop on and get what we feel that we need. And Tim, Adam and I had the opportunity to talk about it. And we felt that a thousand test kits was sufficient, especially with the new legislation, insurance companies have to pay for what you buy and you can get the four kits for your household from uh, the government. We just felt that a thousand was sufficient. Um, we'd like to see a good portion of those be used with employees for departments for a basic test and stay program. Um, and I, I haven't worked out all the details yet, but um, so like DPW, Bob should be able to have some to be able to use on the spot. Uh, fire department, police department, town hall. And then we would have a supply for emergency purposes. Also for residents who have no other outlet to get something if they need it.
Okay.
And we, the price is actually, what, five fifty a kit and there are two kits per box? Um, we're not going to find a lower price than that. So thank you, Mayor Nicholson.
Yeah. Um, this is fantastic. Um, we, I know that a couple of board members had been working with um, with you and Adam to ask questions about how we could do that, especially when we got the news that, or you know, like we didn't make the cutoff for um, for poverty um, right, level. So we wanted to be able to be flexible in some way. I do appreciate that there are definitely um, multiple methods out there to get them. This is just adding an, a, another toolkit. Um, you know, whether we do a, a Facebook post or however, you're going to put out that information, Lori. Uh, for people that understand that um, if they're in a pinch, that they can, um, that their town can support them. And again, hopefully people are taking advantage of the federal government's test kits as well. So this is fantastic.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Tim.
If I might add, purchasing by the pallet is the best option, gets us the best price. Some vendors will come down in smaller quantities, but the price goes up at a premium. All of these are currently approved. There are four different levels through the state, through the uh, procurement and purchasing, and these are all approved by the state. So there's not any of the running around, backpedaling, trying to figure this all out. It's already been figured for us. I think this was a phenomenal move on the part of the city of Gardner and regionalizing and working with the surrounding communities. It was the way to make this happen.
Yep.
And we, we kicked numbers around quite a bit before we settled on that thousand, but with all the other venues available, it made the most sense. And pardon the phrase, but I think we're getting the biggest bang for the buck.
Yep. So I would move to approve the use of ARPA funds to purchase COVID nineteen test kits as a part of a transfer in ownership uh, with the city of Gardner in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
All right. Motion in a second. Anything further? Okay, hearing none on the motion to approve the use of ARPA funds uh, to purchase COVID nineteen test kits as a part of transfer in ownership with the city of Gardner in the amount of ten thousand dollars. How do you vote, Julie?
Yes, absolutely.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Uh, and like I was saying, there's a companion part of this. Lori just alluded to uh, the MOA that uh, that was um, drafted, um, which is in the packet. Um, Adam or Lori, any further words on what the, the memorandum would do?
Uh, because this is a agreement between another municipality, requires the board to give me, authorize me to enter into that with the mayor.
Team, it makes perfect sense to me. I don't, I, I don't have any questions. This is just, you know, making it happen. So therefore I would move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Templeton and the City of Gardner and for the transfer of ownership of COVID test kits for the town as, uh, for the town as presented and for the town administrators to sign such document. Okay, uh, I had a motion and Julie seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding or MOU between the Town of Templeton and the City of Gardner and for the transfer of ownership of COVID test kits for the town as presented and for the town administrator to sign. How do you vote, Julie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Great job, team. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you very much.
When is the expected delivery? Was there any uh, I thi- I think I saw somewhere it said they've already ordered it. Oh, it was in the uh, the, the ARPA request. So that's already, they've already done their part.
Yes.
So it should be arriving.
Probably when, within a week, I would think.
Oh, good.
And uh, Chief Dickey has already committed to helping me pick them up and
Okay.
store them, so.
Great. All right, thank you. And our last item on new business this evening is action related to parks oper- uh, parks and operational hours order. Adam, did you have something on that?
We put this on the agenda, I think a little too early. Uh, I'm, I'm going to recommend the board to table. Mr. Sozik had had a chance to review it and I think he has a few words of why the reason the table would be coming in where the board should table uh, before the motion, somebody places the motion to table. I just had Bob speak because I, it would have to be a motion before it ends discussion. So Mr. Sozik, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you could jump in, um, because Bob's aware that the, because they got the cemetery rules, sunrise, the sun, sunset. Um, so Bob, uh, if you could just update the board, please.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Chair, board. Um, as you know, the cemeteries have been on this and posted for uh, a long time. And the park and wrecks are uh, always in a question of are they uh, suns, a sunrise, a sunset. Well, back, I guess that by law never got voted on, but I would like to give the board something to to dwell on and not make a quick decision. Back in two thousand nineteen, um, uh, towards the end of the summer, in October uh, sixteenth, there was a neighborhood meeting held for Gilman Way to authorize lighting in extended hours over there for the basketball court.
Yep.
So in that lighting is um, from May first to October thirty-first. That's for the basketball court only. I just, money was spent by the town. Uh, there was a lot of donations from um, the light department and volunteer work. And I don't know if you, if you make it all parks and then all this does is wash this project out and to me mu- uh, money wasted. The kids did enjoy playing basketball over there at night during the summer hours. Um, with the lighting and I think if we set rules and regulations on the parks, um, I'm asking if you would exclude Gilman Way. Um, because I think down the road, if we end up with the ice rink over there and we got this basketball court with the kids playing the summer nights, um, you, now you're shutting down limitations to the kids. I'd rather see them there playing basketball than damaging uh, the parks. The other parks, I mean, is not as used as much.
Right.
And Gilman offers a lot more. So that's the, to-go place. Um, and once nine thirty hits, the lights are off. This, nobody has control of the lights. A sensor turns them on and a timer turns them off. Um, I think with the activities and uh, more upcoming things down the road. I, I would hate to see us lose the lighting all over at Gilman Way and everybody's hard work and effort put into it to get it there.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Uh, yeah, I agree. Let's, let's gather some more information on, on this. I would make a motion to um, table action related to the parks operational hours order.
Second.
Okay, any further? Okay, any further discussion on tabling this action? Hearing none on the motion to table action related to the parks operational hours order. How would you vote, Julie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thanks, Bob, for, for framing that. We'll work with Adam to try and, and gather the information. So we've got that, a better, so we, ready, ready for this, so we can shed some light on it moving forward.
Thank you.
You set them up and I knock them out. All right, thanks, Bob. I appreciate you hanging in there.
You're welcome.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, that finishes up new business. We do have one item on the agenda for old business, and that is concerning an update on the rack from Tim. Tim?
Thank you. I'll be very brief.
Okay.
This process for the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee has gone on and on and on. Most of us figured this would be a three, four, five month perhaps process. We're now in month number fourteen. I will address the elephant in the room briefly. We have had some stall tactics and the meetings have stagnated and progressing very slow. The other member community is kind of pushing, shoving, kicking, screaming. Haven't quite got our total understanding of where we're going with it, but it's becoming quite frustrating for the membership. This went on long enough. I know it's been added to the Adam, help me out here.
The RAAAC?
Yeah.
It's been added to the org chart.
The, the org chart.
What, this does be approved with the budget though, Tim, but yeah.
I understand that. One of the things they did, because this has gone on so long and since the RAAAC functions as a subcommittee of the school committee, they reappointed the members. But when they did such, they removed our representative Carter acting instead of the town administrator and his counterpart from the town of Phillipson. And I threw the red flag on that play. It's like, well, we just made a big change. Voting members are now not voting members. Let's look backwards. How many of the votes did they vote on and were those votes legal? So everybody's kind of scratching their head right now. The two gentlemen from the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, the global acronym is MARS. Some of the stuff they're presenting, we're calling them out pretty regularly, saying, I understand where you're going, but this is an agreement between the town of Phillipson, the town of Templeton. Quite frankly, what we put forward to Desi is how it will go. Stop trying to spoon feed us what Desi wants to see in our agreement. And they got a little upset with that, but I didn't have any heartache taking that stand on behalf of the town. Because at the end of the day, I, I need to be able to present and get this to the voters and make sure we can vote and act on this when we get at the town meeting.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? When, when's your next meeting? Hold on, you went, you want, you're, you're on mute now.
I'm sorry. Our next meeting is in February, I believe, the twenty-eighth is what we targeted. And there is, Dr. Cassavant wants to form an ad hoc committee and try to get to some of the underlying concerns. And we're trying to really limit the group size. He can do that as an ex officio member. It does not violate OML and everything else, so.
Okay.
Watch this space for further developments. I'll keep everybody apprised of how we're going.
All right, sounds good, Tim. And Adam, I, I think that we still do not have a date for the tri board. Is that correct? Are we still on hold for that?
We are. The last we heard that they're postponing it, and now that the state came out with their numbers, which so far looks pretty good. I'm positively optimistic moving forward.
Okay.
Justice, actually, if you can jump in, you looked at some of the other regional school districts and, but I, I could just have him just provide some input. Because we saw a substantial increase of chapter seventy. Justice.
All right. High, high members of the board, so looking at the chapter seventy funding from about fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, going, you know, up, up till now, looking at the year-to-year averages. The difference in regional school funding in chapter seventy went up significantly. If you look at a lot of the regional schools in our district, within our sort of senate districts, as you will, and I'll give credit to Senator Goby, working behind the scenes, who had talked about how she wanted to do, wanted to fix some of the things she saw in chapter seventy funding and a lot of the stuff with regional aid. And it looks like there were a lot of differences. If you look, Nauri Ganset went up about close to six hundred thousand in their chapter seventy-eight from last fiscal year. And that is a, I, I would say over several hundred percent increase from the year-to-year. If you look at other regional school districts like Neshoba, they went up. I believe Neshoba went up two million dollars in chapter seventy-eight. If you look at other places like Apple, Royal Stan, that went up a significant amount. I believe that was about one point five million in chapter seventy-eight. It's, it's historic. If you look at the numbers in the past few years on the Massachusetts government's website, it's, it, it was interesting. I think there's some interest whether or not those numbers are correct, but everything looks well, considering how significant they are, I mean, we're talking about two million increases in certain regional school districts.
We stick our fingers in our ear and say, no, 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 we can't hear.
I know, I know. Those are the numbers given out by the state, so we're gonna, that's the preliminary numbers. And that's how it is, and that's how it looks historically, and we'll see how it looks going forward. But all things are looking positive. Things are looking positive on the chap, towns end with chapter ninety as well, and all of the other different state aid. So, but I know the town administrator can speak a little bit more closely to that, but.
We didn't, yeah, I, I don't want to go outside the school funding because we didn't put it on the, put it on the agenda for a discussion. So, you know, even just coming off discussing the rack, let's leave it at that. I think this is good news. We can talk about it in the next meeting, but thank you for the update, Justice. All right, Tim, thanks for the update on the rack. That is the last item of old business. We've got board member and administrator comments. Julie, would you like to start? I don't have anything this evening.
Sure, I really don't. I'm not sure. I, I just have something real quick to request that we put Scout Hall project on maybe one of our agendas in February.
Okay.
I guess that could have been under old business, but yeah, I would like that to be brought up again, please.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Terry?
Well said, thank you.
All right, thanks, Terry. Tim?
Real brief, I did watch the Attorney General's Office webinar on the open meeting law. They, there was a lengthy discussion. It was a little over two-hour meeting. Some of the changes to the rules of the road with our remote meetings, remote participation, Zoom. The good news is we're meeting all the checkmarks and the items that they're listing. We, we've been doing this all along. The current authorization to conduct the meeting via Zoom was slated to run through April first. It's being extended to June fifteenth. The Senate already voted and approved that. It was going to the House for a vote today. And at that point, it becomes legislation, and then it'll kick it over to the governor and say, here's what we're doing. So as much as we want to get back to the live meetings, we still have the provision. One of the takeaways I noted, there was the discussions before, if we had a hybrid meeting, some people remote, some people in person, that where did the quorum have to be? That has been removed. As long as we have a quorum present of whatever board or body, the meeting meets the intent of the open meeting law. Little bit of a change in departure from the prior modes of thinking, but they understand this is not going away, and they're trying to work with us.
I, I was thinking about this today, when, when you were telling me that, the dates and, you know, getting it pushed out. One thing that we, as a community, I think have excelled that, and you know, partially or a, a big part, because TCTV has enabled this for us. We got good at both. We're good at in-person meetings, and we've become pretty adept at the, the at the Zoom remote meeting. So whatever, you know, we wind up deciding, these, these are conditions, condition-based approaches to having, you know, to executing our, our duties as elected officials. And I think we're doing a great job. At two eighty-four cases in town, now is not the right time to come back. I think that the public health team is making, you know, we're not in a state of emergency anyway. Because, you know, this has been, we've been living this for two years. So to make these common sense, common sense decisions, it, it's just par for the course for us. We don't even blink an eye. TCTV, as long as we give them a heads up, they're ready, and we already know how to do it. It's just, I came right back to my, you know, you know, the same, the same spot that I would do it, that we did it before. So whatever we wind up deciding based on the conditions of the pandemic, we're going to get it done. And Tim, you're good?
I'm good. I have to agree with that. I think we've taken the proactive stance on this and done everything in our power to make it happen. Keep government alive and moving and keep the citizens involved.
Yeah.
This is like the third or fourth different conference and webinar I've sat through, and we are hitting all the marks. And we've been doing it from day one, where a lot of towns were playing catch-up early on. I think everybody now is on the same page. But once again, Templeton tough, our little town kind of paved the way.
Yep. And, and, and you're, you know, constructive use of, you know, your, your backdrop there. It looks like you're about to officiate like a, a fight or something, or on, like the Oscars or something. So we're, we're, we're that good. We make it looks like we're officiating things. So I had nothing.
It's more like a sports team after the event conference.
Right. Thanks, Tim. Adam, did you have something?
I do. I have an update on the, our two pieces of special legislation, the Parks and Rec and the demo revolving fund that the, that we, we seeked to town meeting that was approved at the fall for that special legislation, and it came out of the committee that the Senator filed, it came out of committee favorably. So I expect to see some, some legislation coming down relatively soon, depending upon how the general court acts. And then another thing, keep an eye out. We missed doing it last year, but the Chairman Curry and I will be having our State of the Town, so we'll be reaching out at some point to TCTV. And we'll be coordinating that, that Mike and I were just talking about it not too long ago. So that shall be something that we get done, and that's all I have.
Yep. Thanks, Adam. Yeah, and folks, what, what's going into that is everything that you've already heard. It's basically the, our achievements and our challenges that we had briefed to our legislative team. So no surprises for you for, for, for the rest of the board. Just another one of these. I, I watched the, I was talking with, with Adam today, and I watched Governor Baker. Is that last night or the night before? It was Robert Byrne's birthday, so it was the twenty-fifth. Yeah, that was yesterday.
Last night.
Yep, and you know, just to follow suit, to basically say, this is what's going on in your community. All the good things that, that people here in the regular meetings like to just kind of give a, a recap for the year. So Adam and I will take care of that shortly with TCTV.
Andy touched on some ser- a serious note too. Governor Baker, you're talking about his state of the, he wasn't afraid, he wasn't afraid to go deep on the battered women.
Yep, agreed. All right, folks. Justice, are you good? All right, I would, let's see, our next meeting, I'm sorry, I didn't, I usually have that written. When's the next meeting, please?
February ninth.
February ninth. All right, next meeting, February ninth. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And that's when we're opening up the annual town meeting warrant too.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
I have here the second. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
I think we have to do a roll call technically.
You, you said that to me last time. I'd been doing it for two years. All right, all right. Motion to adjourn. How do you vote, Julie? She said yes.
I thought she said.
Terry?
Drumroll, yes.
Tim?
I'm pretty sure reading Julie's look, she sat there saying no.
Let's go for another hour. All right, and, and you vote yes?
I do.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned at eight fifty-five PM.